I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the auditorium, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the Father. To the Holy Spirit. To the Lord God. And to the Father, who has risen from the earth. And to the Father, who has made the world. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life. And to the Father, who has given us life.
Just so everyone knows, this is the only meeting that I am the temporary chair, so I'm not doing this very well. I'm going to hand this over to someone in the very near future, and that will be better. But moment of silence for the individual reflection for Betty Gardner, who was a clerk typist from 1980 through 1996, who passed away on June 22nd, 2016. Also for Joan Malone, an employee in the Transportation Department from 1974 through 2006, who passed away on July 2nd, 2016. And Patricia Gowron, English teacher in the district from 1971 through 1991, who passed away on July 9th, 2016. Also to all the victims of needless violence in the last month. All right, next is the 4.0, administration of oath. 4.1 to the superintendent of schools.
...........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
5.0, election of officers. This is the time to nominate and elect the board president and vice president, and then administer the oath. So 5.1, president of the board for the 2016-2017 school year.
I would like to nominate Patrick Uteck as board president.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? All right, could I have a vote for Mr. Patrick Uteck being the president to the Board of Education for the 2016-17 school year? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? All right, congratulations, Patrick.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
And I can turn this back over to you, okay? Thank you. 5.2 is election of the vice president of the board for 2016-2017 school year. Do we have a nomination for a vice president?
I would like to nominate Bill Gallagher as vice president for the school year of 2016-2017.
Do we have a second to that nomination?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor for Mr. Gallagher as vice president, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So moved. Congratulations, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you.
And 5.3 is administer the oath to myself and Mr. Gallagher.
......................................................................................................................................................
And before we continue, we'll have some adjustments here. As far as the seating goes, Mr. Sage, could you switch with Mrs. Metz, please? And then Mrs. McKay, if you could slide down? And then Mrs. Janik, if you could place the nameplates, please?
Questions?
6.0 is the appointment of officers without additional remuneration. 6.1 is the clerk of the boards, Mrs. Sandra Janik. Could I have a motion to accept the appointment of Mrs. Janik?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 6.2 through 6. ... Oh, so we will administer the oath to Mrs. Janik at this time?
I stand to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will officially discontinue the duty of the court before you will go to my board.
And then subsequent to this meeting, 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, 6.5, and 6.6, Mrs. Janik will then administer the oath to the following officers, as long as we approve those here. So I would like to lump 6.2 to 6.6 together, if that would be okay with everyone? Could I have a motion to accept the appointment of those 6.2 to 6.6?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 7.0, the official undertakings, the bonding limits. We have a detachment with all the bonding limits for the district. Could I have a motion to accept the bonding limits as they are written?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments on those limits? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 8.0, designations. These are many of our calendars, meeting dates, budget calendar, bank deposits. Our official newspaper will be the Lancaster Bee and the DePube. Time Warner Cable is our television station. Radio stations, WBEN, WXRL, and WGR. And if, again, if I could lump these together, 8.1 to 8.6, unless anyone has a problem with that? Okay, could I have a motion to accept the designations? Is there written?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Can I interrupt? I'm sorry.
Yes.
The regular meetings, we, I know at the last meeting, Mrs. McKay mentioned perhaps not having a meeting on August 15th. We do need to have that, but we also realize that we need to have, approve our tax levy before that. So we're going to need to have some sort of meeting between now and then.
Okay, so on August 8th, we would need at least four members of the board, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So there is no meeting in lieu of that?
Are we still having a meeting on the 15th?
No, we were, I was going to get this after you approved the...
Oh, sorry.
That's all right, no problem. We're working together as a team here. So the reality is, is that we do need to accept the tax rate on August 8th. So if we could just, you know, have four board members at least show up on August 8th to accept the tax rate, then we would be fine with that. What Ms. Phillips was talking about was that we, you know, try not to have the second meeting in August unless we need it for personnel reasons. So, you know, that's to be, you know, to be continued and to be seen. But we definitely do need to accept the tax rate on August 8th. So if we could just have some, you know, board members think about that and confirm that they could make it on the 8th. If we have four, we have quorum, and then we'd be perfectly fine.
Could you let me have eight? You can have the 15th.
This is, temporarily, this is in lieu of the 15th, right? The 8th?
No, this is a, just come in, this is an addition, on top of it. But we, like she's saying, is we always try not to have the second meeting in August unless we need it.
Do you decide it now?
That's what we were hoping you would, yes.
Yeah. Under the age of... How are you doing? Seven o'clock? Yeah.
We can do whenever you want. Seven o'clock is our normal time.
I'm good at that, so if we can do it...
Okay, I am tentatively good. I may have another engagement, but...
Yeah, we have two.
I can do it in the evening.
Three?
I can do it in the evening. If you did it earlier, I don't think I can. On the Monday. Monday, the 8th.
Seven o'clock, Monday, the 8th?
I may be able to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the only addition to the, to the calendar for the regular meetings.
So if we could extend, we need to leave that. Remember we talked about voting that on the 3rd?
The 15th?
No. We can do two and round two, but...
I mean, is there any, so we have things on the 15th that are going to need to be done? There's no way that we can forego that meeting?
Well, we would, we want to try to forego one of those meetings, yes.
So, along the way, but we have to do the 8th, right?
So we think we could do everything?
Can I, I'll elaborate a little bit. This beautiful, wonderful woman that works very hard on your board packets, her daughter's getting married at the end of July, so to have everything beyond the 8th would be hard for her, and we want her to be able to enjoy her daughter's wedding. So we most likely will need a meeting on the 15th because we have a lot, a lot of personnel changes and retirements. Couple of assistant principals, teachers, those types of things that you don't want them to accept other jobs by waiting through August 29th to be appointed. So I know it's kind of a lot of meetings, but unfortunately...
Do they find that if you have two, three, four, or five meetings?
Go ahead, in 20 seconds, you're getting into... You're getting into a situation with resignations where you hold them to 30 days, et cetera, and that's why the 29th...
They come to town after you do one of those. I'm still, every month, so you know that. More time I can run though.
We probably, given the fact that we have so much, we have a crew over there of people who are being hired, and we're doing a lot of hiring this, this summer, we're going to probably need both those dates. They might be quick meetings, but we're going to probably need that just for personnel reasons.
Okay. And I'll remind everyone, if you do have something that you have to attend to, you can be excused for a meeting, too. You don't have to make every single meeting, although obviously we'd like to make as many as we can. Okay, so could I have a motion to accept the designations, 8.1 through 8.6?
I just have one question.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just have one question in regards to the official newspaper. Is it the Lancaster Bee and the Buffalo News and not the, oh, it's not?
It's those two.
So it's Lancaster Bee and DePube? Okay.
Right. And you, did you say you already made a motion? Mrs. Christopher made a motion. We second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Okay, 9.0 is authorizations, which is quite lengthy. Many of these are, have not changed from last year, except for security officers has increased $1 to $27 per hour.
Can we group all those?
Yeah, that's what I was hoping to do. Authorize, yep. Okay, so unless anyone has any questions or specific comments or wants to individualize any of these, could I have a motion to accept 9.1 through 9.18?
So moved.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 10.0 is other appointments. And this, again, is quite extensive. Again, these are all appointments for agents or treasurers or committee members, appoint delegates, our law firms.
There's no changes, though.
No changes, no. Okay.
I would just...
You just need to do 10.4 to delegate.
Right, so we have to, we should do that first, right? Appoint all the delegates per the list, and then, okay.
Can I make a comment in regards to some of the appointees? I would like to, and maybe we can, we can use this as a goal for next year also. I'd like to, hopefully I have the right initials here, Jamie, do RFPs, possibly for the school physicians, attorneys, and some of the others that we have appointees, just to, just to kind of get a flavor of what else might be out there in regards to who can service the Lancaster School District, and also in regards to fees that are charged.
So we could take a look at that at a future meeting and try to set up a time where we ask the groups of physician, physician groups or law firms, as we've done in the past, at least in my tenure, to come in and make a presentation to the board, and then we can revisit our relationships with these individuals or firms. So I guess we can do that at a future meeting, but that is, that is a sound way to go about things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as far as the delegates go, 10.4, we have first, the delegate assembly, and that's the policymaking body, the association. Last year, our delegate assembly member was Mr. Graber, and the alternate was Mrs. Dapczynski. Do I have anyone who would like to serve as part of the delegate assembly? And Mrs. Metz, I'm sure you've looked at these, and you might have an idea. Normally, well, at least within my tenure on the board, the voting delegate, we ask one of the newer members to represent the board at the convention.
Okay.
Would that be good?
Yes.
Okay, would you also like to be the part of the delegate assembly? Why are you smiling, Mrs. Christopher?
We usually give this a birthday.
Exactly.
It's one, it's a one-day assignment. It's easy.
But it's nice, though. You get to see how things tend to...
It is actually pretty cool.
Actually, it is, yeah.
We're just sitting there, it's kind of odd.
It's a one-day assignment.
And it's a buffalo this year, so.
It's easy.
And so you'll hear the resolutions and feelings of board members from around the state as to how they feel about those resolutions, and you'll see how the legislative process works, or how...
It's a good one.
Yeah, it really is. So, okay. So all, could I have a motion to accept Mrs. Metz as the delegate assembly member and also the voting delegate for NISBA?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. The budget and finance team, last year, Mr. Sage was our representative and Mr. Gallagher was the alternate. Would anyone else like to do that? Or Mr. Sage, would you like to repeat that responsibility?
I'd like to do that.
Okay. Would you perhaps be willing to be the alternate?
Absolutely.
Anyone else care to?
Do we need alternates for everything, too? Like delegates, like, if we can't make...
Right, I'm sorry. Yep, we also need an alternate for the delegate assembly and for the voting delegate. I'd be willing to be the alternate for the delegate assembly, or for the voting delegate, if not...
I'll be an alternate, too.
Okay. Well, Mrs. Christopher, you can go ahead and do that if you'd like.
Well, you need one for voting, and...
I'll do, I'll do one as well.
You can put me wherever.
Okay. So, Mrs. Christopher, I'll put you as the delegate assembly alternate. And Mr. Gallagher, you'll be the...
Don't miss it.
The voting delegate alternate.
It's on a Saturday, I think, so...
It is on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Look, we're all going to be there anyway.
Yeah.
Do we have to vote all these? Do we vote all these in? Yeah.
It's just a convention, and it's impossible to...
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll, rather than voting individually on each of these, we'll just approve, or we'll have the ideas as to who's going to fill these roles, and then we'll approve them at the end. So anyone else, budget and finance team? They meet three times a year. Mr. Sage has agreed to be the alternate.
I can do that one, I guess. We'll switch spots.
Mr. Gallagher, okay? Okay, so they're switching spots there. Okay, next is the legislative team, and Mrs. Christopher, you served on the legislative team last year. Would you like to continue that?
Probably the alternate.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Actually...
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I wanted just to bring your attention that on the legislative team, they have more than one of us, one board member from the school district at their legislative team. We could send more people. It doesn't cost anything.
I just have to be like, at least one.
I'd actually like to try that, too, this year, so...
Okay, so why don't we have our appointees as Mrs. Dapczynski and Mrs. Christopher, and then Mrs. McKay can be the alternate?
Yeah, I mean, anyone can go.
Okay.
Just telling you, just so you know, I didn't know if you were aware of that, but most districts send more than...
Okay, would anyone else be interested in attending? Okay, so moving down, so we have all of our delegates for the different delegate assembly, the budget and finance and legislative team, and the voting delegate. The audit committee last year, Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Sage, you were part of the audit committee. Would you like to continue that role? Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Sage?
Yeah, I can do that, if anyone else wants to. I know there's a space already, too, for...
Okay, and we have, we have one, so we have one vacancy on that.
Keep in mind that...
Those are exciting meetings.
Yeah, Ms. Phillips has a very soft spot, soft spot for people at a meeting, so someone should step on. She does a lot of work for us.
I'd be willing to do that.
I can, I can do that on the...
Mrs. Dapczynski? Okay, thank you. Food service committee, last year was Mrs. Dapczynski and Mrs. McKay.
I'll stay on there.
Okay. Mrs. Dapczynski, is that okay with you?
Yes, sure.
Okay. And building use committee was Mrs. Christopher and Mr. Gallagher last year.
I'll stay on there. The only...
I could do that.
You want to do that instead of my, do you want to do that instead of me?
That's a good one.
Okay, so Mrs. Christopher and Mrs. Metz?
The other one is, that's not on there, it said, Ms. Liaison, I did like...
The liaison, right.
Oh, we just had it.
I'll continue to do that. It goes right along with the legislative team, it only makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question on that, is there a room for more than one person on that? Or did you, are you just, is it one person per district?
It's really just one person on the liaison thing, but definitely do the legislative.
Yeah.
I would recommend...
That I'm going to do.
More people do legislative, but I get it, I mean...
Okay. The, and lastly, we have the health insurance committee, which was Mrs. McKay and Mrs., Mr. Sage.
I'll continue on then.
I can say that as well.
Okay, anyone else have any interest? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, could, just reviewing these, the delegate assembly is Mrs. Metz, with the alternate as Mrs. Christopher. Budget and finance team will be Mr. Gallagher, alternate Mr. Sage. Legislative team is Mrs. Dapczynski and Mrs. Christopher, with Mrs. McKay as the alternate. Our voting delegate at NISBA, the convention, will be Mrs. Metz, with an alternate as Mr. Gallagher. The audit committee will be Mr. Gallagher, Mrs. Dapczynski and Mr. S-, Mrs. Dapczynski and Mr. Sage. Food service committee is Mrs. Dapczynski and Mrs. McKay. Building use committee is Mrs. Christopher and Mrs. Metz. Uh, health insurance committee is Mrs. McKay and Mr. Sage and the liaison to NISBA will be Mrs. Christopher.
Food service is who?
Food service is Mike Sage and Marie McKay, correct. Thank you. The audit committee, I have Mr. Gallagher, Mrs. Dapczynski and Mr. Sage. No, I mean, I had said I would do it, but then Mrs. Dapczynski said she would step back, so, okay. Okay, could I have a motion to accept all those appointments, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. So what we have remaining on the appointments are ten point one through ten point three and then ten point five through ten point thirty-six. If no one has an objection, could I have a motion to accept all of those appointments?
So moved.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Eleven point O, other items, uh, eleven point one is to establish conference reimbursement rates for meals at a maximum of sixty-four dollars a day with receipts. Uh, this is a slight increase per um a state average of uh conference expenses that uh those attending who are representing the district uh are able to expense. Uh, it's a slight increase, but it does go with a state recommended uh figure. Could I have a motion to accept that rate?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Hi, what was the rate before?
It was fifty, was it fifty?
Fifty.
Fifty. Yeah.
Right.
Um.
Sure, the board policy indicates that we, the maximum daily amount that we would um reimburse for meals while at a conference or workshop or something like that, um, will be based on the um United States government, government average per diem rate and they list it by state and by county. Um, so in the minutes, we've had fifty dollars a day, um, except for I can't even find when that rate was less than fifty dollars when you look on their website, so we just haven't updated this, so the board policy um says that that's the rate that we're going to use, so really, it just went up from like fifty-seven to sixty-four for Erie County. Um, it is very, very, very rare that we even have anybody come even close to the fifty dollars, um, so I don't see the sixty-four dollars as being a problem, uh, because typically when people are at conferences and workshops and those things, um, meals are part of the conference, so.
Um. Is this, this is for all employees, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving that rate? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Uh, and then we have eleven point two is the re-adoption of all policies and codes of ethics in effect during the previous year. Could I have a motion to accept the re-adoption of those policies?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. And then lastly, eleven point three is the mile, mileage reimbursement rate according to the IRS approved rate, which is fifty-four, fifty-four cents per mile. Could I have a motion to accept that rate?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point O, presentations, we have none for this evening. Thirteen point O, we'll move into our regular session. Uh, fourteen point O, correspondence, uh, we had no written correspondence to speak of. Uh, I did have a conversation with Mr. Dakota Miller over the, uh, since the last meeting and it was uh very informative on my part. Um, it was very nice to talk to that young man and he was very respectful in presenting his ideas and listening to my responses, so I thank you for that. Anyone else have any correspondence? Okay, fifteen point O, approval of minutes, could I have a motion to accept the regular session meeting minutes from June twentieth?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Sixteen point O, items from staff organizations, uh, is there anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Yeah, uh, we'd like to congratulate Mr. Yeller on the reelection, welcome to the reelection. We also want to wish for a good 70 and 75 for people.
Thank you, Mr. Marchioli. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association? Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel?
Uh, Jim Pitarzki, I'm newly elected president and we would also like to welcome Mr. Mattson to the school board.
Thank you, sir. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay, thank you. Seventeen point O, uh, board reports, anyone from the board have anything to report? No, okay. And other than graduation, which was very well run, uh, and I really got a sense for how many five hundred children is. Um, and it was quite impressive, uh, but I thought the night went very well and I think people were happy and we were very proud of those graduating this year. Eighteen point O, old business, does anyone have any old business they'd like to bring up? Wow. Nineteen point O, we're moving, that's good. Nineteen point O, new business. Nineteen point one, personnel items. Nineteen point one point one, could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes as written?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Nineteen point one point two is a specific superintendent authorization.
Those are all air.
Except I can't see that.
Yes.
Kyle, can you do the honors there? I appreciate that, Kyle. I can't see that far, but uh we appreciate it, thank you.
So welcome to all the new hires. Congratulations. I, I think initially, I don't know if we have any.
You know, could, could we ask you, I apologize for doing this to you, but could, could we ask you each to stand up and state your name and uh what role you've been hired for and what building? Well, not necessarily hired, but. Your new.
Hi, I'm Kristen Dubruck and I'll be working and help you first grade.
Hi, I'm Tracy Gladgen, I'll be working and help you also first grade.
So welcome to both of you and anyone else who's in a new role, good luck with that as well. Okay, so nineteen point one point two is uh the superintendent authorization, that was, uh, as it was written, could I have a motion to accept that?
Second.
Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Nineteen point two, education items, could I have a motion, nineteen point two point one, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Special Education's report?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Nineteen point two point two, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Education?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty-one point O, business and financial items. Twenty-one point one, could I have a motion to accept the financial reports?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twenty, yes, twenty-one point two, point three, point four, point five and point six are all policy adoptions that have been on the agenda for a couple prior meetings. Um, if anyone, uh, if, if no one has an objection, I'll lump those together, um, could I have a motion to accept each of those? Has it written?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twenty-one point seven, the food service operating statements uh from May two thousand sixteen, which was of course quite impressive. Uh, could I have a motion to accept that, those statements?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on that?
Once again, I'm just very, very happy and, and um, I guess I'm really pleased with, with the food service manager Tammy that we hired last year. She has done an outstanding job within the district. I mean, to bring us back from being seventy-three thousand in the hole to forty-four thousand right now, my hat's, my hat goes off to her, but my hat goes off even more to the managers because they, everybody had to work together and figure out how we, how we were gonna pull this off and how we were gonna get this all to work and, and they did it and I'm very pleased because it's been a couple years since we've had, you know, a profit, so I'm just very, very happy. And when I see them, I see them um sometimes out in public and I, once again, I just tell them from the bottom of my heart, I thank you so much for the hard work and, and what you have done this year and we're very proud of each and every one of you. And people have to remember too that, you know, people sometimes, you know, in the last couple of years with the loss that we've had, you know, people have thought about maybe, you know, searching and maybe going, maybe outsourcing it, but people have to remember that these are people that live in our community that serve lunches to our children every day and they take a lot of pride in it and they take a lot of pride in, in preparing the food too and it shows with the leadership that they had this year. They really brought it all together and I'm very, very proud of them, so thank you once again.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of uh accepting the statements as written? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twenty-one point eight, uh, the school lunch prices, there's uh slight increases this year from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, could I have a motion to accept the new prices?
Second.
Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty-one point nine, surplus equipment report, could I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty-one point ten is bond issued change orders from the two thousand fifteen uh phase four of the capital project, could I have a motion to accept those change orders?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty-one point eleven, uh, bond issued change orders from the two thousand twelve, phase three of the capital project, could I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty-one point twelve is a bid award for transportation parts and supplies, could I have a motion to accept that award?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Uh, twenty-one point thirteen, if I could lump thirteen through eighteen together? Those are agreements between the district and other organizations. Uh, could I have a motion to accept twenty-one point thirteen through twenty-one point eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on those? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty-one point nineteen is extra classroom activity clubs and we have a list of new clubs that were proposed. Uh, there's no cost to the district this year because those clubs have to be run by the advisor for one year uh in order to come back and uh ask for a stipend or for some funding. Uh, could I have a motion to accept that list of clubs?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty-one point twenty is an agreement between the district and Young and Wright Architectural for capital outlay. Could I have a motion to accept that agreement?
So moved.
Aye.
Was that a second, Mr. Gallagher? Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty-one point twenty-one is a state quality environmental review, um, which involves a capital outlay, could I have a motion to accept that review?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty-one point twenty-two is tax sorcery for Northwest prop, North Forest properties, could I have a motion to accept that recommendation?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Uh, twenty-two point O, public hearing, we have no public hearing for this evening. Uh, twenty-three point O, future presentations, there are none scheduled at this time. Uh, and then twenty-four point O, uh, could I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss potential litigation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. So for those of you in attendance this evening, thank you very much for coming. You're welcome to stay, uh, but we'll be moving into executive session at this time. Uh, and the next Board of Education meeting is yet to be announced. Thank you, everyone.